I'd like to call this special call meeting of the Board of Trustees. It is Monday, June 16th at 5:00. And I will turn it over to Vice Chair Ms. Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for today. Continue to guide us with your wisdom to continue to do what is best for our students, staff, teachers, and administration in our community in Lexington, too. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with no objections, the consent agenda stands approved as presented. All right, we are now in open session and we are having a board budget workshop. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm going to quickly defer to Ms. Strickland as she'll provide an update on our current budget scenarios and just an update for your consideration and understanding. And then, of course, we'll have, open the floor for any kind of questions or comments any board members have, but I'm gonna let Ms. Strickland first just provide a general update of where we are.
Okay, good evening to everyone. The first scenario, we're gonna talk about Scenario 1. And I wanna call your attention to page four. And under, um, thank you. Under additional request, there are five items that have been added to the budget. These were expenses or quotes, items that were received after the first reading of the budget, so you'll see those listed there. And those have been added in both Scenario 1 and Scenario 2. Also, with the second reading of the budget, I have included the update, updated projections for revenue. And these projections were based on the Senate Finance version. So the first reading was based on House Ways and Means. This second reading is based on the Senate Finance version. Okay? And so next, you will see on, oh gosh, I just should've numbered the pages, but the next to the last page, in both scenarios, both budgets are balanced. Okay? So the difference in the two scenarios are the teacher salary schedules, classified administrative salary schedules, and the number of meals that it takes to budget, to balance the two versions. Okay, um, do you want me to discuss the difference in the salary schedules for both of the versions, or do we just wanna open it up for questions?
Go ahead.
I have another question. So in Scenario 1, basically what we did was we took the state minimum and started at a certain number, didn't get to that page yet, um, I think I have some things out of order here, and had a certain increase to the state minimum up to the point where we were already paying salaries higher, we would have to reduce salaries, which we're not gonna do, right? So I think it was at 3,000 above the state minimum is what it ended up being, as high as we could go. And then we were higher than that.
Right, so originally how that 3,000 came about, I took our current salary schedule at step zero and added $1,500 to step zero to all of the columns except for the bachelor's plus 18. And that's because the state is doing away with that column, okay? So that happens to be $3,000 above the state minimum salary schedule. And if you look at the printout of the salary schedules, the Scenario 1 salary schedule, the column, or the cells in yellow, that's where, if I follow the state variance in between steps. Everybody with me? You got it?
I don't have it in front of me.
I think it's all the way in the back of the package.
Go in the very back of this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's the last.
Give me a minute.
Okay.
There we go, I got it. I didn't think I had it.
The first page with the yellow, that's the proposed Scenario 1 salary schedule.
Right, Scenario 1, yeah.
That's this year's.
Yeah, okay.
It's like the last form.
Yep.
Got it.
Okay, so what ends up happening is it's $3,000 above the state minimum, all the way down until you hit the yellow cells. Where you hit the yellow cells, we're already above the, our current salary schedule is above $3,000 or more of the state minimum, except for a few cells, I think four. But how that was derived is I took that step zero of our current salary schedule, added $1,500 to it, and mirrored the amount of the difference between the state minimum, how, because it drops from zero to one, it's $250, then $250, $250. And I copied that formula all the way down until we're currently more than what that formula would be, which is the yellow cells.
So I really like the consistency of it all of the state minimum. I think that's very easy to follow and possibly for future, for us, you know, with other budgets in years to come and future boards, I think it would make it a lot easier to, because right now our salary schedule is just at random, you know, you might get a $100, $200 increase one year and then, you know, the next year you might get like a $1,200, you know, increase. So it's, I think some districts do percentage between cells, so that flows nicely, you know, a certain amount over the state minimum would be an easy way to track and, you know, make some decisions around a salary. Right now, ours is just kind of at random, so I like the way it, you know, it is based off something and it flows nicely. And I know it would take us a couple of years to, you know, finish it out, but I do really like that. And we were reported back to on the salary schedule that we're highly competitive at the upper years and we're, after last year, starting at the 50 and being one of the first districts to start at 50, we're very competitive at the early years. It's the middle, and I feel like Scenario 1 helps with the, I mean, it gives, I mean, everybody gets their, their increases, but it really helps that middle area of the scale, or that's what it appears to do, so that we can not only be, you know, competitive at the upper years and the early years, but also in the middle. So these are just some things that I really liked about Scenario 1, so I just wanted to kinda just share, share that.
If you look at the, if you look at the page, the Scenario 1 step difference within the schedule, that shows you the dollar difference in between the steps. So you can compare that to the state minimum, and you'll see it mirrors all the way down until I could not continue that process down.
So that's 250, if we're just looking at bachelor's, actually, yeah, well, bachelor's, it's up to the, you know, the step four, and then it goes to 500 except for step 5, 10, and 19 is where they have the $1,000 jump. But that mirrors the state minimum and how they did their steps. And then the upper years is more than 1,000 because that's where they are right now in their steps.
Ms. All?
Having served on several boards, this is one of the hardest salary decisions I've ever had to look at. And I guess you're trying to correct some maybe pass randomness maybe as hell he was describing, but what I, I mean, other boards I've been, it's okay, let's, if you're not basing it on merit, then it's, we're get, oh, I'm sorry.
If you're not basing it on merit, we're talking about, you know, 3% raise across the board, or 3.2%, or 2.75. And when I look at either scenario, like Scenario 1, and I don't have the numbers of teachers that fall in this range, but the average of all the cells is 2.7%, but you got some teachers that'll get, you know, up to a 5% raise, and then the more experienced, some more experienced are getting 1.8% raise. That just, that just bothers me that it's not, that you could have, not known performance, and performance is not part of this, that one person sitting next to you is gonna get 5% and then, and then another person's gonna get, you know, 1.8%. And with the cost of living probably being more like, I think that, you know, if I read what they're saying, it's, you know, 3% was kind of the bogey, I think. I just have a hard time with people that are doing their jobs, and maybe they could be the top person in the school and they're only getting like a 1.5% raise. That's why this was so difficult. Either scenario was difficult. I've just seen most, here's our percent wise, but I guess we were trying to go, get it closer to mirror the state minimum. So it's just a very, very difficult thing for me, number to follow and then know how to explain that, you know, to a teacher that only got a 1.5% raise and had, you know, superior, you know, performance, recognized as one of the top teachers, been here 18 years. How do you look them in the face and say, you know, the governor says 3%, we're only gonna give you 1.5%? And again, I don't know how, the numbers that fall in these different cells, but that's why I'm having a hard time explaining why we chose that versus just, you know, make it all 3%, make it all 2.75. And I know you got some that jumped from one grid to the other, if they get their masters or reach a certain year, maybe that's why you do 2.75 and jump it up. And new to the board, I know we got first and second reading, too late to come up with the third alternative, but that's what bothers me with both sets. I just, it's just too hard for me to make a decision when you have that kind of randomness, if that makes sense.
Well, I can give you a little bit of history. So when the State Department adds a flat dollar amount to the minimum salary schedule, that throws those step percentages out of whack. So we have to meet the minimum teacher salary schedule. And when you give a flat, or even a district gives a flat amount increase, it throws, you know, at some point it's gonna throw the percentage.
Yeah, 3% of 75,000 is more than 3% of 50,000. I get, I understand.
But if, if, if that was the board's, you know, desire to get to that, then we would, I would have to work on a salary schedule to get to that solution.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's, and I'll turn, it's just hindsight, I wish that could've been our first, what's our salary decision methodology, you know, to start off with? I wish we could've talked about that. Now we're in a call between the first and the second reading, and we got Scenario 1, Scenario 2, and with no input on, on the structure of how this is, and that's what's a little frustrating for me. And I'm looking, printing this off with these numbers and all these, and that's what just worries me, is you're gonna have, you know, some of the teachers just, and that's, you know, it's like that in most businesses, though. The state obviously did something different, but, you know, the 100,000-year employee getting a 3% raise gets more than the 50,000, but that's how most businesses do operate.
And I would have to agree with everything he just said, and that's the problem I have with Scenario 1. I couldn't, um, I think there's, you know, when we get to Scenario 2, I'd like to offer a couple changes, you know, but I just can't, in all respect, vote on Scenario 1, because I can't go to a teacher that has given, you know, started out at 17,000 and worked the way up. I mean, I was a state employee and you, that's just how it worked, and that's where we are, and you got rewarded at the end. And that's what they work for, you know, towards, you know, what they're gonna make in the end, that's what their retirement's gonna be based on, you know, you put your years in, and you walk away with, you know, a great package, and you feel good about what you've done, and you've had a great career. So that's why I would have to go with Scenario 2 with, with some changes. Now, both of these, right now, you said, they're budgeted, they're good, they're balanced. What are the meals?
So Scenario 1 calls for capturing 1.4 of the allowed 5.59 meals. And Scenario 2 calls for capturing four of the allowed 5.59 meals. So remember, this is reassessment year. So our meals are rolled back from 183.9 to 169.3. So then they would go from 16, and Scenario 1, from 169.3 plus the 1.4 to 170.7. And then Scenario 2, 169.3 plus the four to 173.3.
And Scall, Scenario 1, a teacher with 32 years, 33 years, 34 years, what would they get?
On Scenario 1, well, because there's not a step 31, they're at step 30.
So they're capped.
So there is no, yes.
They're capped at 30.
There is no step for them to step for a year of experience.
Well, let me ask this before we go any further, 'cause, and this is Mr. Key's idea, and I think it's absolutely great, I do, because these teachers have given their lives to us, and if we did, on, whatever scenario gets voted through, 'cause Craig's right, we've got to bring both of them, and then we can amend them at the meeting a little bit, if we get to a happy meeting here. But on both scenarios, and I really can't imagine anybody not wanting to do what Mr. Key has suggested, is that we give a $1,000 bonus, a one-time bonus, to all of our teachers that are year 30 and above that are capped, not a continuing, a one-time bonus of 1,000.
Okay, that's, that, I mean, we can do that. A bonus does not factor into their retirement.
Right.
My question would be, if we did that, and we're sitting right here next year, and so a teacher that's at, let's say, let's say we adopt Scenario 1, just for simplicity, a teacher at step 30 is at 72,599. Okay, we give them a $1,000 bonus, so they're still sitting at step 30, what are we gonna do when we're sitting here at this time next year?
Well, what would you suggest? 'Cause you're the money person, I don't know, I'm at.
Well, they got the $1,000 bonus to get them to 73,599, so are you gonna do a?
Well, that doesn't change, that doesn't change their salary, they're just getting a bonus.
Okay, I just, I just want everybody to understand.
A bonus is a one-time, and it's not a recurring.
Correct.
We would hope, you know, when we can, we would continue to do that year after year.
Yeah, but.
But we could take it year after year and look at our numbers, you know, and see what we can, you know, what we can do each year.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna say the same thing, that, and I don't think we need to make a decision for this year based on what we might do next year or five years from now, because it sounds to me, correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds to me like we're trying to get all of this in line somehow, where it makes some kind of sense instead of being all over the place. And, I mean, I guess that's the explanation to teachers or to administrators, to say there's a reason there's a disparity, is because we're trying to work this schedule out accordingly, I don't know. But in regard to what Mr. All said earlier, I would really like, in the very beginning of this process, whenever that happens for you, be it January, whenever it is, to come to us and to say, what would you guys like to see? Not just about salaries, but programs and everything else. When you presented the very first time to us about this budget, you said, we went to the schools and we asked them what they wanted and needed. Well, I would appreciate it if you would ask us the same thing, what do we want? And then we would have a better starting point, as Mr. All said, to work our way toward what seems more equitable to him, and also the suggestion that Mr. Key is making. See, we're stuck three days before our vote trying to work these things out, and it seems that we should've worked them out much, much sooner than this.
Well, I think, you know, the budget process, we start, the budget process rose February, and we start meeting with, you know, department heads, and that's when the talk at, you know, the State House starts happening. So it takes time to meet, you know, there's a, there's a timing issue as well, you know, to meet with everyone, and then we have the budget workshop, and I can't remember if we had met with everybody by the budget workshop.
At least the first round.
Yeah, so maybe then I can, we can have something together to bring for the budget workshop, where we can talk about, like, all of the different things that the departments are wanting.
Well, you know, I really would prefer it to be before that. I would like for us to be one of the, one of the people that are talked to at the very beginning. Just to give you an example, that doesn't have to do with, with salaries, if we as a board passed a policy that said, we want a multilingual teacher in every classroom, now this is hyperbole, we're obviously not gonna do that, then if we passed that policy, then the job of the administration would be to say, how much would that cost, and how can we get that in a budget, and what do we have to juggle to make that happen? Well, same thing, if Mr. All had said, we just would like 3% across the board for everybody, then y'all would've known that as you were meeting with everybody else, that this is what our board is wanting to see happen, how can we make that happen? I feel like even when we had the budget workshop, that it was basically, you've got number one or number two, and here's what you can vote on. So I would like for us just to have more early input.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, because with the salary schedule, like everybody's noticed, it's currently inconsistent with the, with the steps. There are steps, but there's inconsistencies already. So, you know, if, if the goal is to get, you know, the other, some other districts have done a percentage between, but I mean, they would've had to make that decision at some point in that particular year, you know, how it falls is how it falls, but that's their, you know, they're thinking of the best way forward for their budget overall, whereas we're going off the state minimum, which there's still, you know, something to, that you're basing it off of, it's not just kind of, you know, out there. But I do love the idea of the, you know, the $1,000 bonus for the ones, so the steps go up to year 30, and over 30, there's, there's no other step, so the, I do like the bonus idea for the years over 30.
As Mrs. Burkett said, I think you don't have to get that exact number, is it gonna be 2.5%? Is it gonna be 3? You know, we just have these conversations, and we can amend it once we know the exact number from the state, but I just think this is one of the most important things we do as a board, and, and having those kind of conversations early on, strategy, I think would serve, at least as a new board member, make me feel a lot better voting one way or the other, if we got that type of input. But I do have one question, to just, to put it in perspective of the taxpayers, so my understanding then on meals, owner-occupied residences aren't taxed, right? There's a state penny tax or whatever, yeah. So, but just say, I don't love the rental, it's a little regressive tax, but say a $200,000 apartment, what is one meal equal?
Well, let me, let me kinda talk about that, 'cause I did include that in the second reading of the budget. If you'll flip to page 3 of Scenario 1.
Let's see, page number?
That's, go back one, that impact of operating meals, that right there.
Okay.
Okay, so your second, your secondary legal residence, that is taxed at 6%. So the appraised value, if the appraised value is $250,000, the assessed value is $15,000. So if you look, we're gonna increase 1.4 meals. So on that property, that secondary legal residence, that increases the tax bill by approximately $21 a year. So for a car, the appraised value, $38,000, that 1.4 meals increases that tax bill by $3.19 a year. Commercial property appraised value at $750,000, that 1.4 increase is $63 a year.
Thank you, I apologize, I missed this page.
That's okay, no, that's okay, I mean, I wanna clear up any questions.
And then the Scenario 2, one, this is the 1.4.
The four meals, and I got this, I have the same thing in there for the four meals.
But if you change on Scenario 1, if you add the lines 30 and above, that 1.4 millage would change, wouldn't it?
Correct. If I add any, any expense, then the meals will change.
Meals can go up?
Correct.
1. something, 1.6?
Depends on how much, how much we're gonna add. I mean, if, if we add, you know, it depends on how much we're adding to the budget for me to balance the budget, 'cause that's what I would be balancing the budget with.
Well, um, okay.
Can I ask one?
Are we where we can, like, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Christina, this is Ruckrass, but, and I brought a little bit of this last time, and I still think that you can take away, we, if no teacher leaves, no administrator leaves all year long, then that's a great problem, we're gonna, but we know every year that there's float between one job and the other, and you're, in these meals, you're budgeting for 100% employment, 100% of the year. I just think there's some number you could, you could take off, I don't know what the number is, and it's probably not a big number, but just some number, and be conservative, that you could take off this from, from the labor charges. And I've seen it done, you know, in other places I've been, 'cause they know they have 5% turnover, whatever it is. Just, just throwing that out there before, you know, it's something you might, we might could amend it. I don't know if there's any other items that can be taken out of the budget, but, you know, it just seems like we could do something along those lines.
Anybody else, Ms. Burkett, on Scenario 1 still?
Well, so how, how many people approximately would fall into the $1,000 bonus category?
Um, the last, the last time I counted, and I have a stack of papers on my desk for people leaving that I haven't been able to get to, is 34 people. That are years of experience of 31 and above.
Okay, so what we're talking about is needing $34,000 to come from somewhere, is that what we're talking about?
And plus fringe, plus retirement and FICA.
Right. Yeah, and I think that, that what Mr. All is saying is, is there possibly $34,000 in there someplace for people who left, that, you know, didn't fill out the year, et cetera? I think that's what he's talking about, that if we didn't, we didn't have 100% employment the whole year. Uh, so, is there some number that could come off, that could go toward the 34,000?
Well, I, I can't project right now for next year.
We're talking about this year, this current year.
Well, this current year, so, the way it works with school finance, the current year, you have your revenue, less your expenses, and the amount of money that's left. Thankfully, it doesn't look like we're gonna have to use fund balance, which we projected we would. We're not gonna have to, but the money that's left, per our board policy, there's a policy that we have to split that with capital projects, with the CPIF Fund and the General Fund Fund Balance. So, that's where that money goes, to fund balance and the CPIF Fund. So, then we start next fiscal year, building our budget.
Yeah, and so, so we can't, we can't write a policy that says that what we have left over this year, we wanna pay these bonuses with?
I can, I can budget for that, but we would have to understand that it's using fund balance for that portion, because it, it, it goes into fund balance, and then I'm pulling it back out.
But what we're saying, worst case is this, um, the mills from 1.4 might go up. It would go up slightly, but it would be very slight, to cover, you know, the 30,000-plus.
If, if that's the only thing we're adding.
Right.
But there was other things added to us, with the workman's comp and other things that changes that has captured now, okay?
Yes, I've already included that, 'cause that's known.
Is there any more on que- scenario one? Any questions on scenario two, we need to talk about?
Me.
Go ahead.
Okay, 'cause again, I can't vote, um, taking, like Craig said, I can't explain to year 22, how come they're getting 1.8 versus year zero through 15's getting whatever the percentage was, Craig? I can't exactly remember what you said, but, and in scenario two, if we changed the, the 1,500 to 1,000, to 1,000, everybody gets their step, plus a thousand-dollar raise, everybody. There's no trying to get it to the state requirements limit, you know, all that. Everybody understands, we appreciate zero to 30, and then 30 and above are now, thanks to Mr. Key, with this great idea, are gonna understand, we, we're gonna give you a bonus, 'cause we appreciate you coming back and, and being with us, as long as you have been. If we change that to 1,000, and then we changed the classified and administrators, where the classified, um, or the non-certified support staff got two, but the administrators got one. If you, if you ran that, do you think, with, with what we've added in, that we would, the millage would stay the same, or?
The millage would decrease.
Decrease a good bit?
Yes.
A good bit?
Um, approximately two mills.
Okay.
But that's excluding the bonus of $1,000 for years 31 and above.
So, we would still be adding around 35,000 back into that?
Yes, but my question with that is, if we're giving step 30, $1,000, those people will be, would be captured in step 30. 'Cause right now, years 31 and above are all sitting at step 30. So, if we increase step 30 salaries, they would fall in.
Well, I mean, is that, okay, well, I think what we're trying to ask, so, and, and you can explain it to us, we want the ones that, so, leave 30 where it is, 'cause they actually are getting the step and the thousand-dollar, or 1,500, whatever scenario you go with, right?
Well, when you go from step 29 to 30.
Right, okay.
They get the stepping.
But I think what we're asking, Skye, is anybody that is not gonna get a step, so that would be a year 31, instead of year 30, is that what we should be saying?
Year, yeah.
Okay, well, then, that's what we mean, yeah, so.
Yeah, and since step 30 goes up 1,000, then they would get, anyone over 30, that, this year would get the 1,000. Is that a true statement?
Right.
Every cell would get 1,000.
And if, every cell gets 1,000, that means anyone over 30 years would get the, the 1,000, because the step 30.
Correct.
But what Ms. Wu and I hear is, because those years 31 and above aren't getting the step, she's wanting the extra 1,000 for the step.
No, and we're not doing a step, we're just giving a bonus. They all stay at their same salary, we're just giving a bonus. Nobody's trying to do any, because they're, they're capped. I mean, that's where, the way the state does it, I mean, like, you know, the Department of Corrections, you cap it 28. So, you don't make any more money unless the governor gives a straight across raise.
Right.
So, those people are there, we just wanna give those people that don't get anything, a thousand-dollar bonus.
But they would, if the salary schedule on step 30 is, in scenario two, is going from $74,099 to $75,099.
But I said, but, I'm talking about, but somebody that's in year 31.
They're on step 30 currently.
So, when the thousand-dollar adds to that cell, they'll get the thousand dollars?
Yes.
This year, this, this year.
So, if you, if, if we have a teacher that has 43 years of experience, that teacher is sitting on step 30 currently.
And what does, what does that mean for her salary?
It goes up with the step every year?
Whatever that, whatever that step 30 salary does, it applies to that person that has 43 years of experience. 'Cause there is, I have nowhere else to put the teacher.
She'd get $1,000.
Like every, all the teachers are linked to the salary.
So, they technically get a step raise?
If, if you add the 1,000 on the all sales, they will get the 1,000.
Which I would call a cost of living, living, because.
So, you're either deciding, you know, with scenario one, it's 1,000, or it would have to be a bonus. So, scenario one, it would be a bonus, and in scenario two, since it's 1,000 in every cell, that 1,000 in year, step 30 would be, wouldn't, 'cause they're going off of step 30, so they would.
So, they would get 1,000 dollars this year.
We'll just change that to 30, 30 and above, that line there, right? Everybody over 30 years would get 1,000 per cell.
If you're, so if you're currently a year, if you're currently, this year, year 29, and you're going to 30, 30's on the scale, so that, so that, so you're, you're getting your step. If you're currently a year 30, then, then you're, this is your last year on the, on the scale. After this year, you technically come off the scale, but you're still on it at step 30. So, I think if anybody who currently is a step 30 employee, then you get that $1,000, so you're not, it's not a step, but it is a cost of living increase. So, anybody who's currently a year 30 or above.
Or above, they get 1,000.
But, but, there is no above, so if you're currently, you're, everybody's on step 30. I guess above makes it confusing.
Yeah, that's it, yeah, okay.
So, it'll still read step 30, but anybody 30 and above gets, yes, okay, yeah, that's right, that's right.
Step 30.
Okay.
So, so, I'm sorry.
And then, with scenario two, we wouldn't have to recoup it next year, we wouldn't have to.
Well, you would have to either, you would have to add more to step 30 again.
If we, if we wanted it to be a recurring, we'd have to do it again next year.
Well, again, we're not, we're not talking about next year.
And I understand that, but considering that we're all a little confused right now, I'm, I'm just asking, is it, are we, are we saying it the right way, it's a one-time cost of living raise, are we doing it the right?
Yeah, I mean, the whole schedule, the whole schedule would increase $1,000.
And, and the big, besides the, the, at year 23 on scenario one, you quit increasing the sales, I think. So, I think it was, if I looked at it right.
Correct.
Scenario two, you went all the way down with the, with the increases. That was a, that was a, a big difference, I think, in the, in the dollars. Uh, am I right, am I looking at it right?
Tell me, tell me again what you're saying.
Year 23 on scenario one, you didn't up the grid any.
Correct.
You stopped, 'cause it is back to the state minimum.
Correct.
In sta- in scenario two, you wouldn't, you kept going with increasing all the sales. So, that's why the teacher, at year 23, or year 24, increase is gonna be so li- little in step one compared to step two.
Right, well.
I think Ms. Burkett had a question, too.
I'm just trying to clarify, but, so, so what we're saying is that in step two, we don't have to give anybody a bonus, because if we give everybody $1,000 across the board, then year 37 and 43 are gonna get the $1,000, so.
Correct, correct.
Okay, and, and so, next year, when we do a budget, we just decide if we wanna give out money or not. But, right, we don't have to decide any of this, this doesn't have to be a permanent thing, we can just do that this year. There you go, thank you.
I just wanna clarify one thing.
I'm good.
Is that there's inconsistencies in this, um, in scenario one and scenario two, regarding percentages, is that?
Yeah, scenario two.
So, either way, there's, it's gonna be, this is not the year, there, it's just gonna be a flat percentage, you know? Either way, it's gonna be all inconsistent. One, you're just working towards a system that, you know, whether it be like other districts do a percentage increase between sales, or you're going off of the state minimum, you're either working towards a plan for the future, or you're just adding a certain amount, whatever that ends up being, to each cell. But this would be the year, it'd be inconsistent, regardless of the scenario.
But scenario two's getting it back more consistent, because a thousand-dollar, a percentage on 50,000 is a lot higher than the percentage on the $1,000 on 75,000. So, the numbers are starting to get back closer together now. Correct. They are starting to, your percentages are dropping a whole lot as you go down the scale.
Well, with scenario two, we're just given.
But we're trying to stay even, and we keeping pace now with scenario two.
Scenario two, we're just giving the $1,500 increase to our current salary schedule. The amount in between the steps, you'll see, all that have scenario two's step difference within the schedule, you see there what the step amount is between the steps.
But if we came down to 1,000 instead of the 1,500?
That would, that all changes.
That would, that would, you know, the amount in between the steps would stay the same. It's just we're giving a $1,000 increase instead of 1,500.
Well.
And it seems like for next year, we need to really work, look at this step schedule, and try to get it more consistent.
Or do what Craig is saying, a percentage across the board, yeah.
That was the point of scenario one, right?
Yeah, right now, with scenario two, the average is 3.78, and the, it goes from 2.7 all the way to 4.1 is 4.8, you know, so. And then, the sa- you find the same things, it's, the, the range is so different, you know, from, the average is 2.71 in scenario one, and it goes from 2.1.98 to.
You know, back years ago.
4.8.
Years ago, the State Department had, from step zero, I wanna say until step 16, I think it was a 1.4% in between the steps. And then, when you hit year 17, I think it was 1.1% in between the steps. And then, I think, is that when 2008 happened, when, you know, everything was frozen? I think that's when, you know, we went through a period of where every, all the teacher salaries were frozen, and then that's when things got out of whack. And then, when the State Department adds a flat dollar amount, the percentages in between the steps get out of whack. Now, the history with Lexington two's salary schedule, I don't know, I don't know the history, you know, with the amount of money in between the steps. You know, but, but scenario one, at least we had something to say, this is why we're, the amount of money in between the steps, because that is what the state minimum salary schedule does as well. That's where I was going with scenario one, until I was asked to bring scenario two to the table.
And we're over the state minimum, $3,000 most of the way up, and then more than that at the upper part of the scale, with scenario one. And I'm just curious, we say possibly fix it next year, would you bring us anything possibly different next year, than, than going off the state minimum? Is a percentage between cells a better way to go? Because I would love to start making sense of it this year, if possible.
To be honest, I looked at that, um, because I did look at some other districts' salary schedules, and I looked at that. But you gotta start, as you know, you know, if you start, let's say, at 50,000, and do the percent in between all the way down, when I quickly, quickly looked at that, it put our step 30 way up there. So, I put the brakes on that, and tried to figure out something different.
As another data point on Lexington one, I know, thank you, Ms. Rucker, for bringing all that data to me on the spreadsheet, but, um, with scenario one, um, the average sale is $2,200 less than Lexington one. And scenario, I mean, $2,900, or, oh, actually, $3,000. And then, scenario two is $2,200. So, we, you know, fairly competitive, but we are, you know, a lot bigger school district. Not trying to say we should be the same, but I feel like that's who we compete against, for the most part.
So, my, I think my last question is, if we do scenario one, with the $1,000 bonus for over, 30 years, what, what, how would this play out year after year? So, basically, we would be deciding how much, we already over the state minimum. So, every year, we would just be deciding how much more over the state minimum we want to be. That would be the biggest decision, every year, not trying to fix sales, because this would, in a way, fix itself over, a- as it finishes out the scale. So, can you just help me think of how, if we did scenario one, what would next year possibly?
Well, we would have to.
As far as adding that amount over the state minimum?
We would have to, A, see what's approved for the minimum, and see what that, I, I do believe that it's gonna be $50,000 for the minimum next year. So, was, that's a $1,500 increase to that. I don't know if they're gonna do it, I mean, I, I'm not gonna dare.
Right, right.
Project what legislation is gonna do, 'cause I have no idea. You know, it, it, it all depends on what they do, and then, what we wanna do as a district, on how to continue this forward. I can't project what it would be.
So, we'd just be evaluating whatever the state minimum is next year, when we get to that point, and then, seeing how it.
Do you wanna stay at, do you wanna stay at $3,000 above the state minimum? Then I would take the state minimum, you know, and add $3,000, and see where it falls. And if we're currently paying more, then we gotta keep our current salaries where they are.
Mm-hmm.
On the steps on the schedule. But I think that, we would have to address that.
We would, I mean, we definitely address it, I was just, you know, trying to think it, how, you know, what it actually does for us to have, you know, something that, that follows.
I mean, I know, I, I know some districts pay a flat percent above the state minimum. And that's what it is every year, a flat percent above the state minimum. So, whatever the amount in between the steps, that's what it, you know, you take the, the minimum, add that percent, and that's what the local school district salary schedule is.
And currently, we have no formula like that, no.
Not that I have found. And not that I have found.
Ms. Burkett?
Yeah, could I just ask, at, at one point, I think Ms. Wu floated the idea of administrators getting 1% and classified getting 2%, did we go any? and classified getting two percent, did we go any further with that? And, and as just a point of clarification, isn't there some category that last year got three percent?
It was three percent across the board.
Across the board went three percent last year.
We went big last year.
Okay, so can we just discuss that a little bit?
Sure.
So somebody, I mean, give me some input about, why would we go away from the two percent? I mean, what was the thought?
Well, I was just really trying to, with what the support staff makes and non-classified make, you know, that I said at the meeting last time, you're talking about twenty-two thousand, you know, two, two percent's four hundred and forty dollars. Well, you know, I think we, you know, I think all of our administrators are great, I'm not trying to step on any toes, but I think we're very competitive with our administrative, what we pay them. One percent with what they make is still a nice raise.
Okay.
And that's where I was going, I was trying to kind of, whereas with Mr. Key's thousand dollar bonus, also make sure that the support staff, non-certified, got a little bit. And our administrators, even though we love all of y'all, you know, that we pay them well, and one percent would be nice. But I didn't think it had to be two percent. And that way, I was trying to get the milage down a little bit, too.
So does that have to be put forward as an amendment?
I would ha- you would have to make it as an amendment Thursday night.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Are teachers assistants administrative, or?
That would be the two percent, right?
The classified.
So that, that's one thing I have a problem with then.
Yeah, what, them making two percent?
Well, them.
Making less than that.
Yeah, that's just, yeah.
You mean what they make?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, what they make is horrible.
I mean, you could.
But to give them just one percent.
I know, I was, they need two percent, but I was just saying, you kind of have a broad brush between the CFO and the teacher's assistant.
Yeah.
With the flat rate, you know, the three percent across the board last year, that upper, they, I mean, three percent on those upper numbers is, that was pretty substantial.
Yeah, I was thinking about, I was more worried about the.
Me too, me too.
And that's why, that's where I came up with the two percent for the, for the non-certified support staff, you know, and then one percent for the administrative staff. And then, and it was difficult for me to say not to give everybody fifteen hundred, but come down to a thousand, because we did give, we, we did, you know, but I did that so that would be all the way across the board, plus the thousand dollars, and I'm not going to say it, because I always say it wrong when I'm trying to talk about the bonus or whatever we're doing with above thirty. Because I'll go back to what Mr. All said, and with much respect with what Ms. Rucker has said, I, I just can never vote, and I, I totally understand halfway what you're saying, Skye, I'm just not a money per, you know, and say, so I have to trust you, but I can't look at somebody that I know and say, oh, I, sorry, our, our first-year teachers got, just off the top of my head, a total of eighteen hundred, and you're only going to get seven hundred and fifty, because we're trying to get everything down to the, where we're in line with the state minimum. And I really don't mind being over the state minimum, I mean, I think that's.
No, we are, and I want to be.
I want to be, I'm, I'm cool with that, yeah, because that, that brings them here.
Yeah, it's the right thing to do, and it, you're right, it affects.
But that's kind of where, yeah, if I made any sense with any of that.
Well, scenario one, then, that's one, is going up, each bracket's going up, um, oh, you, never mind, it was, sorry, didn't mean that, it, the fifteen hundred was scenario two. One thousand was, on the first, the very first one went up from.
Scenario one.
Fifty thousand to, um, fifty-one.
Fifty-one five.
Five, so fifteen hundred.
On, that's, that's step zero.
Right, step zero, that's what I mean.
Yes, step zero, but I just want to make that clear, because.
Yeah, and then, but what Ms. Rucker is saying is, everything be, um, I guess she's saying, I don't know if she's saying scenario one or scenario two, a thousand.
Scenario two.
Scenario is a thousand all the way across. And they still get their step, everybody gets their step.
The only thing that, that's what I think they were saying, I want to make sure, is the thirty-plus would get the thousand, and then the, the, the thousand bonus.
We're, that's two different scenarios.
Well, I knew, if you, if, I, I thought that's what she was suggesting on the amendment.
For scenario two, or scen?
Well, scenario, okay, because I get totally confused, okay? So what I'm saying is, and I don't know how to say it, so you would have to say it, is that scenario two.
You want everybody to get a thousand dollars.
Right. Yes.
Correct.
Got it.
And everybody, but.
All the way through.
All the way through.
That's it.
Yeah, and we're, yes.
That's all you got to say, every cell gets a thousand.
Every cell gets a thousand, but everybody gets a step and the thousand. So everybody's not getting, some peo- some people are getting certain amounts over a thousand.
Correct, everybody's getting a minimum of a thousand dollars.
Yeah, which they're already doing in scenario one, there were five sales close, but that's what, my question was today, because the, the step already gave more than a thousand or more.
Okay, so scenario one and scenario two, everybody eligible for a step is getting a step.
Plus whether it's the amount.
Everybody in scenario one and scenario two, by law, everyone has to get a step. The state minimum salary schedule goes to step twenty-eight. Lexington two goes to step thirty, okay? So once you hit step thirty, there is nowhere to step. So when you have thirty-one years of experience, you're at step thirty. When you have thirty-two years of experience, you're at step thirty. The only way step thirty changes is if we adjust that step thirty salaries in the different col- all the columns. Okay, so if we're going to adjust the whole salary schedule up fifteen or a hundred dollars, everybody's going to receive at least that increase, then every, everybody eligible for a step will get a step. The people at step thirty will not get the step, because they have nowhere to step. Does that help?
They stay at the thousand.
They stay at step thirty.
They're getting a thousand.
Whatever, whatever the annual salary.
Because normally, they would not get, if we were given a re- they would not get it.
Right, because there's nothing to step two.
If, if we were not increasing our current salary schedule and we're only doing a step, those people would not get a step, they would not get any.
Got it.
So the solu- solution to that is, for scenario one, you would say a one thousand dollar bonus for anyone over thirty years would get a thousand dollars, that could be a solution there. And then scenario two, when that thousand dollars hits the step thirty, then, um, then any, anyone that's currently in step thirty gets another thousand dollars.
So, anybody, anybody beyond thirty.
Yeah, beyond thirty.
It's a thousand dollars.
Which is anybody at thirty or beyond would get a thousand dollars.
Well, everybody gets a thousand dollars.
Well, in scenario, yeah, in scenario two.
Everybody get it all across, plus their step to thirty.
Yes.
Yeah.
But.
Skye's going to roll her eyes at us in a minute.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing.
Or throw something.
I mean, this is, it's, it's important, because what I'm hearing is, are you talking about an additional thousand dollars to take the place of a step?
I think, so this is what I'm saying, scenario one with a thousand dollar bonus for anyone over thirty years.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay, scenario two, anyone over thirty years, either way, is a thousand dollars.
Right.
For anyone over thirty years, either way, it's a thousand dollars.
Correct.
So, so I think, then, whoever wants to.
But that would change the milage rates in both of them, scenario one and two.
If you want to amend it, what you say is, go with scenario one and pay a thousand dollar bonus for, because they didn't change the steps after year twenty-three in scenario one. So, um, uh, so any, I think if you wanted to amend it, you said anybody over thirty gets a thousand dollars. Now, we kind of, the ones in twenty-three through thirty are only going to get the difference in the step, which is, you know, but, but anyway, in this scenario two, you could say, instead of starting off with the fifteen hundred, start off with a thousand and just run it all the way, all the way down, and there's no bonus in, in, in scenario two.
Correct.
And we're changing the two percent across the board to two and one?
Correct.
Okay. So we, we.
I need to get my laptop out.
Okay.
Is there any more questions on anything, on this?
Just, I just want to ask just one last thing, I just don't like, I'm just, I don't know how many teachers assistants we have, I just, just wish they weren't in, but they got three percent last year? Okay, never, it just seems two percent of their salaries.
And you know what, that would be a great point, too, if we want to look.
At changing that.
Yeah.
In future.
And for future, absolutely.
And that could be something we look at early, you know, in the budget process.
Because it is a tight budget this year.
It's a tight budget.
Fair. Ms. Castle, she had a question?
I was just going to ask, about how many workers do we have that are over thirty in our district?
About thirty-four.
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 The last time I counted.
The same, I, I thought you were saying.
That's, that's teachers.
You mean, you mean everybody, you mean like teachers and?
I didn't, I haven't looked at.
Well, that would either fall in our admin or classified, right?
That's fallen, and classified, right, because they would get the percentage, yeah.
I got you.
Yeah.
And this, and this, I hate to say this, I'm scared to, but, you know, the steps apply to classified as well. You know, they have a, they have a cap, too. Okay, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Do we have classified over twenty-eight?
On the salary schedules?
But either way, this year is a percentage.
Yeah, it's, do we have classified people?
But they would get that percentage no matter how many years.
But they would get that percentage.
That's, that's within the percentage.
Yes, yeah. I'm good.
We through?
Yeah, I appreciate that extra time and discussion before we go into third.
Yeah, I thank everybody for coming, it really helped a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, we got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.